Hello guys, welcome back to Truth Revolt. Thank you for being here, thank you for joining. Today, we're gonna be talking about some stupid news, in my opinion. As always guys, this is my opinion. And whatever you feel, if you don't feel or think the same, feel free to let me know why. I'm always up for it and I will always defend your right to at least say it. So, let's get on it. Three stories today we're gonna talk about. First one is stupid, and it's really stupid. And in the last couple of years, I've heard a lot of people talk about white privilege, which I don't get it. I'm also white, so maybe that's why. I'm not gonna deny it, but what I wanna start talking about is Serena Williams using what I'm just gonna call "privilege", because she's being a privileged piece of something right now with this thing, this weekend. I recently saw Bernie Sanders visiting West Virginia, I think it was, or Virginia in the US. A town where people can barely afford food, can't afford housing, bills, electricity, the community is dying. You know, nobody can get a job, nobody can stay open. People are forced to basically move the people that are staying and try and keep their time alive, and are doing well. So, I saw that, and then I see this from Serena. Let's just check it out. Check this in here.
Alright everyone, how do we feel about cotton as decoration? Personally for me, it doesn't feel great. So actually, it feels like no polishing for cotton, natural.
Yeah, I'm just gonna stop it there. So, yeah, that was Serena Williams. She's at a five-star hotel by the way. She's done some press stuff that day. She's done, I think she did some stuff with like brand members, couple different brands, but she's in a five-star hotel at all. She's in a five-story hotel, walking around, looking great, she actually does, she looks amazing. Looks great, and I'm not envious of her and her achievements. What I am annoyed about and why I put this story out there is the fact that this makes the headlines. So, this is coming from The Independent. How, 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 and why are we focusing on this stuff? And no offense to Serena, because this might be really important to her, just like me saying that she should not, like, I should not know about this. But she is being so privileged right now, and it's insane and it's pissing me off, alright? If I have a problem like that, I don't go online and tell everybody about this hotel. I just go straight down to the receptionist and tell them if I do have a problem. I probably wouldn't. I mean, generally, I'm like, I'm gonna be here for 30 seconds of my life. It's theirs hotel, they can do it technically, within the laws, they can do whatever they want, right? That's not my issue. But my problem with this story, my problem with a lot of, a lot of people that are well-known, that people care about, is the fact that we get, like, this is what gets shoved in my face. What I wanna learn about is why the farmers or the coal towns, what are we gonna do about those? What are we gonna do about that instead? Why, when are we gonna look at the migration crisis that we are having all across Europe? Those stories I wanna be told about. I could not care less if Serena Williams saw a cotton plant in a five-star hotel in New York City. I could not care less. But this is the story I get. And this brings me to one of my most important points, let's say guys. This is why we're seeing the right-wing extremists growing so rapidly across Europe and across the Western culture. Because this, this is not okay, this is privilege, and this is really bad privilege. Like, seriously, seriously bad privilege. You're looking at a woman who's worth, I don't know, 50, 60, maybe even more, million dollars, right? She is not spending her privilege to go out and give some food to the homeless. She's not trying to help the housing price, no, 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 no. She's complaining about a freaking cotton plant in a New York City hotel. And I have to feel sorry about that? I'm sorry, again, I am not black, I don't know if I'm a slave, I'm a Viking descent, right? So maybe there's some English in me, I mean, we took quite a lot of people from there, I'm not Danish. That might happen. That might be one of the reasons why. But this should not make the headlines. And to be honest, in my opinion, Serena should be embarrassed. She should rise above this. She should rise above this. Anyway, I just hope Serena takes good, long, hard look at herself in the mirror and thinks, hmm, is this what I wanna contribute to the world? She's done amazing, she's done an amazing group. And she's definitely deserved every right to be on the sponsor and the cover of all those magazines that she's done throughout her life. She's worked really hard for it. My problem with this is, again, like I said, is this really the legacy she wants to leave? Like, is this what we as a society are actually concerned about right now? I don't think so. I don't think so, and I don't think this is what Serena wanted either. But it's become this because she made it this. And that's what I mean when I said earlier, this is privilege. And it's bad privilege. It's bad. I don't care how rich you get. I don't care how much fame you get. If this is what you wanna waste your time and energy on, do it, but do it privately. Like, seriously, this is, this should not be the biggest thing in our world. It really should not. Alright guys, let's move on to next story. So, next up, we have a wild video showing a huge mob storming in California jewelry store. Have you guys seen this before? Anybody from chat, have you guys seen it? Have you seen the video at all? I'll take this, no, thank you very much for joining me, how are you? I'm not gonna play the music, I'm just gonna put this here, so we can watch it together. It's insane. This is so wild and crazy. I will give them though, they're organized, it's cool. It's pretty cool. Yeah, it's pretty cool. Right, at the end of the day, I think, this is also unfortunately some of the things that are happening right now, right? Because cost of living crisis, housing crisis, food crisis, inflation crisis, all the crises. We're talking about a crisis every four minutes basically, right? I mean, we really are, talking about a crisis all the time. And it's a shame. We have the biggest and most wealthiest countries in the world on planet right now, that's ever been, ever existed. What we're seeing right now is the billionaires are, instead of paying their own employees like Amazon and Jeff Bezos, instead of paying their workers livable fee, so they don't have to get food stamps from the US government, instead of doing things the right way, don't ship all of your product production and stuff overseas to China, Vietnam, Thailand, what we're seeing is them building spaceships. It's just insane and stupid to say. While they're building spaceships, getting launched into space, and I don't know how much money they're spending on, but that is more important than spending money on a livable wage for their workers. And that is insane to me. That is insane to me. Kinda makes you feel sick, right? When you think about it. When you think about it, it makes you feel sick. Now, I'm not a Donald Trump fan, I'm not. I think the way he does things is wrong, I think the way he says things is wrong, and also, let's just be honest here, he's not exactly the best person ever, if you look at how he treats people and women and anybody else, but... I remember back when we were looking at him getting elected, right? I had a conversation with a couple of people about it, because I've been to the States, I've lived there for a year. And some of my friends, they told me like, Americans, they're not gonna be that stupid, right? They're not gonna elect Donald Trump. And I went, yeah, they are. They're definitely gonna elect Donald Trump. Donald Trump is the epiphany, the same as Nigel Farrar is in the UK. And reason why in my country, the very conservatives are gaining in the polls. It is a fact of life that happens through generations. It's happened last many times in the last couple centuries. And it will keep happening. Hey Lawrence, thank you for joining me, thank you very much. And it will keep happening, it really will. We will keep seeing this radicalization, we will keep seeing these extremists coming more and more from the right, more and more from the left, because of a couple of big things. The biggest thing is, the last, I don't know, 20 years, it does not matter who I put inside of the, in my case, government's office. Doesn't matter. It's the same people. They look different, they might have a different name. Their political party might even be a different color. But at the end of the day, they're doing exactly the same, and nobody cares about what the majority of the people want anymore. They don't, nobody gives a two cents about us. Alright, and that is why we are seeing stuff like this. That is why we are seeing people doing stuff like this, which I don't support. But that is why we're seeing people robbing places like this is because they're, they need money, they need more money to can't afford to feed their families, right? And what do we do? Instead of saying, hey, maybe let's look at why people do crimes? Maybe let's look at the fundamental reason why people do crime, like commit crimes. A lot of times it's because they're poor, they're hungry sometimes. They gotta try and feed the families, and some people also unfortunately ended up that way. Bad decisions lead to bad decisions, I'm not saying anything against it, but why do we still, in the Western world, have a lot of poor people? Hey, at least let's make sure they can come by, right? The problem is that there's a lot of people that don't want this to happen. Hey Sebastian, thanks for joining me. But yeah, there's a lot of people that just don't want us to succeed anymore. Extremism has always been an issue, if you look back in the centuries, that's why Hitler came to power. Before that, it's, what was it then, was it the Jews and Russia, I think it was, if I'm not mistaken actually? Since then, we've had some in Vietnam, Cambodia. Extremists always come when there's no control of the country. Extremists come when the population feel that their needs and desires no longer gets fulfilled. In Denmark, when we had the revolution called "Growing from a Kingdom" to a kind of a democracy, slow democracy, beginning of a democracy. It didn't happen because the king suddenly decided like, oh hey, let me be nice and get the people all the power. No, no. It came because we got sick and tired of feeling used. We said we want more stuff, we want more control, we wanna save. And then we fought, and I think we pretty much we lost the fight a couple times. And a lot of people are explosion, but we fought, we had to fight for the right to, to have a voice. We had to fight, not just be put down all the time by certain people. And you've seen the same thing today. People are tired of voting for people that don't do anything anyways. We have been talking about immigration crisis for the last 20 years, I think. It's getting close to 20 years now, as long as I can remember, right? And we're still talking about the same things, we're still talking exactly about the same things. The rules that were created were created for good. The Human Rights Conventions were created for good, for all people to use in and across Europe and across the world. The problem is, the same playing rules don't apply anymore. They don't. The playing rules of that time don't apply anymore, they're gone, they're changed. Because the people that are using them now are misusing the rules. That is unfortunately the stone-cold hard fact. We are being taken advantage of here in the Western world. We are, we are being used by our goodwill. We, as a society, cannot keep standing, we as a society cannot keep looking from the outside, expecting a different result, when we haven't seen a different result in I don't know how many years. It's literally like sending fire to a piece of paper and going, oh, I didn't expect that to happen, what happened? I didn't expect that to happen, what happened? To going, I'm gonna try again and see if the paper turns on. Our crisis across the Europe, Great Britain, France, Italy, Spain, Portugal, Denmark, Germany, Poland, well, Poland's actually gotten away from it, because they actually have some really good laws. We have created our problems by ourselves. The problem for me is, it's actually not the population that's created the problems, it's the governments, it's the politicians, the people that we elected to take care of us, the citizens of these nations. The people that they should put first is the people of the nations that they're from. That is the one and number one priority. And I'm sick and tired of pretending like it's not their fault anymore. I am sick and tired of keeping to have to discuss the exact same issues. And every time, oh my god, we're gonna change stuff now. We're not gonna change anything, they're not gonna change a thing. But that is why Tommy Robinson, that is why Nigel Farrar, that is why Donald Trump, that is why Conservative Party here in Denmark, that is why the extremists is rising in Germany, France, Spain, Italy, Portugal. We are rising as a people. And I'm not supporting the violence, I am not supporting the violence. But what I am supporting is the fact that the people are rising again. It is basically like back in the day when we overthrew the kings and queens across Europe. It is kind of the same things you're talking about right now, we're seeing the similarities. I'm not saying they dictate the political grip, I'm not saying that, that's not what I'm saying. If I said, if you get that from what I'm saying, then I'm sorry. What I am saying is that the politicians that we have in office today could not care less about us. They could not care less about us anymore. The people that live in the countries, the people that actually are here in the nations, they could not care about. And I'll give you the best example. Let me just change the screen, huh? Look here, look here. This is what I'm talking about. So, actually, let's start with the other one. In Denmark soon, we're gonna have a municipal, um, elections. Which is great, because then we're gonna have, you know, democracy, democracy, yay, democracy's great. Here's my problem. There's a party for the biggest municipality in Denmark, Copenhagen. One of their core things on the agenda for them is, and I kid you not, the Gaza-Israel war. Let's, let's, let's just, let me say that again. We have a political party that is on the ballot sheet for Copenhagen Municipality. And one of their core items is to stop the Palestine-Israeli war. This is the most stupid thing I've ever heard. This is the most stupid thing I hope to God that anybody's ever heard. No matter what you feel about the Palestine-Israeli war, this should not be something on the Copenhagen city's agenda, it should not. But it is. And I don't understand, I don't understand the logic, I don't understand the reasoning, I don't... If you get elected to Copenhagen office, I am not electing you to take care of a city or a war 5,000 kilometers away. This is the same for me by the way, with the Ukrainian. That is up to the politicians in our actual government. It is not up to you in the city government. It is not up to you, it's not up to the council of a city. That is outside your paycheck. That is not what I voted you in for. I voted you in for to get better service for our elderly, the kids, road access, whatever. That is what I voted you in for. Lower taxes, if I can get that lucky, probably not. I did not vote you in for this. We also have, like, the worst part is, all of their people, the people that are going up for Copenhagen Municipality, they're also part of this, an organization that is literally about us voting Palestine in the upcoming election, again, for municipalities. Why? This is obviously first and foremost, a money grab. This is obviously first and foremost, a stunt of some sort. The problem for me is, I actually think they believe in this, which, again, I don't mind. I don't mind that they have this opinion to that war. But, for the love of God, stop wasting my taxpayer money on this stuff. This is not important. I want you to solve the homeless crisis, I want you to make sure that there's affordable housing for the students. I don't want you to focus on this because you can't change anything. You cannot change anything anyways. We gotta look at the bigger picture here folks sometimes. Now again, whatever your beliefs are against the war and whatever you think about Palestine or Israel, that's up to you. And I would suggest you vote for whatever party that supports whatever ideology and opinion you have when there's a national election. Not when it's freaking down to the city council, the city municipalities. This is not, this should never ever be on top, like, at all. This should not be something that we worry about, this should not be something I as a person need to think about when I put in my ballot sheet for my city. And I know I'm sounding angry right now, I'm sorry about that, but it just makes me sad. It actually just makes me sad. Now, we've had two councils here in Denmark trying to, where parties have, which again, I know is a democratic process, and of course they have the free range to do it. But they've tried to literally name certain places and cities after Palestine. Which again, I'm not commenting on Palestine and Israel at all. I'm not commenting on the fact that, well, yeah, whatever, I'm not commenting on the fact that whatever is happening down there, if you like it or not. That's not what I wanna comment on, that's not what I wanna talk about. What I wanna talk about is the fact that you're spending taxpayer money talking about things you can't control. You're spending taxpayer money talking about things and trying to get push things through for popularity. I remember a quote a couple of years ago. It was a business owner, I think it was, he's never done a survey about customer satisfaction. And this guy comes in, you know, he's fresh out of school, just learning all the tricks and tips and, you know, he goes, why, why have you never done a customer satisfaction? You know, why have you never heard what your customers want and likes and stuff like that? The guy who's owned the shop for 40 years, he goes, well, I don't have to, I'm still open after 40 years. People must like what I do, otherwise they don't come here. Now, you can still do customer satisfaction, I'm not saying you shouldn't, but he has a point. And for me, I am tired of politicians going out and saying what they want to do instead of just doing it, just showing me what you're gonna do. I'm tired of, tired of meeting groups, I'm tired of delegations and we need to figure this out before we do this and talks and conversations, I want to see some action. If I don't like the action, I'll vote differently next election. Then it's probably gonna change anything, but I will. That's why I've changed parties in the past. Now, right now, I'm not affiliate with any party. Because I can't find anybody that deserves my vote, that's kind of a side point. My point is, I've been trying to make this whole video, is the fact that we're talking about Serena Williams and cotton in a five-star freaking hotel lobby, or hallway. The fact that we've had the same problems for 20 years and we're still debating what to do about it. All these things match and is the reason why more and more are turning to extreme ways, if you're extreme on the left or extreme on the right, doesn't matter anymore. Common sense has gone out the window. What the people want either from the left or the right has gone out the window. In many, many years, the left has refused to do what the majority of the population wanted to do, in many countries at least, not saying everywhere. And that is usually then, that usually then brings some sort of uprising against the norms. So with the hippies back in the day, they rose up against the conservatives, right? Their parents were very conservative right after World War II, saw that happening. My worry in some ways is the fact that we're never gonna change. Do I think we're gonna have a civil war in Britain? No. Do I think we're gonna have some sort of civil war in the US? No. At the end of the day, no. But do I think the countries are gonna keep being this divided? Yes, for many, many years to come. And that's why I created this channel as well. Because I wanna, I think there's a lot of people out there... Cause I wanna, I, I think there's a lot of people out there, hopefully that you guys watching right now, that feels the same way that I do. That's why I started this channel. Cause I'm trying to find a voice of reason in all of this bullshit. It's hard. But I figured if I can't find a voice of reason, why not try and be a voice of reason? Why not try to? Look at the story Serena Williams and go, this is stupid. This is a you problem. This is not a, the whole freaking world needs to know about this problem. The independents should also be ashamed of itself. They should not bring a story like this and the other newsletters, news programs and so on. This is not a story you should bring. It's not. At the end of the day. I hope there, that you guys can agree with me and I hope that's why you click the follow, the like button, the share button and all those good things. I wanna, what you, want you to agree with is the fact that. Is the fact that there needs to be more middle ground. There needs to be more common sense used, right? In my opinion, we've been focusing way too much on the individuals. Rather than society as a whole. Rather than society as a group. The last, I don't know how many years. At the end of the day. Even though I like being myself and I'm my own person. We are also a group of people that are trying to live together. Under whichever country's flag you have and under which other country's laws and stuff you have. The individual's rights does not trump the safety. And the rights of the common people and the group around it. I know that sounds communist. It's not. It's not, cause I still want you to be able to have your money and so on. And I think you should have more money than what you currently have, but that's a different side. That's a different topic for another day. But we need to stop allowing these forces, these people. To drag us apart and drag us away from what's important. Your individual rights does not trump and does not over. Overmatch, overgrow. Mine and the groups of people that live in the country. I don't care. If you've burned your papers. I don't, I don't care. I'm, I, I wanna send you back home. If you rape somebody, if you rob somebody, if you being an asshole just in general. Look at yourself in the mirror and pick yourself up and get your fuck out. Sorry for my swear, but it, it pisses me off. I don't care if you're American. I don't care if you're British, German, wherever you're from. If you come to Denmark. You do crime, get the fuck out of my country. For the love of God, how is that not common sense? How is it not common sense? That if you come from another country, you break the law, you rape somebody, you attack somebody. How is it not common sense to be, yeah, we don't really want you here anymore. I don't care what the freaking laws say. We have a guy here in Denmark. He's been told he's gonna get deported three times. We can't deport him because he has a freaking kid in Denmark. He has a kid, so he can keep attacking people, stealing, robbing. And we can't send him home. We can't send him back to, I think Somalia, Afghanistan. And he's just gonna keep doing. He literally said on TV, he said, yeah, just keep doing it. Can't send me out anyways. That is what's pissing me off. I think that's what's pissing you off and I think that's why you're watching what I'm doing right now. At the end of the day, guys, we as a society, we as a group, we as a people need to stand together. And stop this bullshit from happening anymore. We cannot allow. The politicians to keep trying to destroy our countries. Now, again, I am against violence of any sort, but the marches that we're seeing right now in the UK, France. And other places, it's spreading. And I don't think it's gonna end this time. I hope it's not gonna end this time. I really do hope so. But that is it for today, guys. Thank you so much for watching. Take care and I'll talk to you hopefully again in a couple days. Bye.